Good evening, everyone. I'd like to officially call this City Council meeting to order. It's Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. The time is now 18:30. It's always great to see you all here. I also want to welcome those who are joining us online. Thank you for continuing to stay engaged, for attending our meetings, and for your interest in the progress that we're making with the city of Mableton. Mayor Owens is unable to join us this evening. He's very busy out doing mayor things and currently has other commitments out of town. So we certainly wish him safe travels, going, and a smooth return back home. And as Mayor Protem, I'm here as his proxy, so I'll be presenting over today's meeting. So we have several items to discuss on our agenda this evening. Our goal is for us to both be productive and efficient, so that we can...
I have to call the roll?
I understand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yep. So we can adjourn and get everyone out of here at a reasonable time. And with that being said, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes. We have Mayor Protem, Keisha Jeffco.
Present.
Councilmember Ron Davis of District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Danny, Danny Oladapo of District 2.
Present.
Councilmember Patricia Alk of District 4.
Present.
Councilmember TJ Ferguson of District 5 is absent. And Councilmember Deborah Herndon of District 6.
Present.
And for the record, I'd like to say that Councilman Ferguson is absent but accounted for, as well as the mayor. All right, and let the record also reflect that a quorum is present. And at this time, we'll have our invocation. Councilwoman Davis, can you please lead us in prayer?
Yes. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, your everlasting protection, Father God. Right now, we pray, Father, that you touch us as only you can. As we move this city forward, Father, give us the heart of unity, the heart of wisdom, the spirit, Father God, that will lead this city, that we will lead this city, Father God, as it should be. So bless the residents, bless the elected officials, Father, and give us what we need to do what will keep us in your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll now move to item four, the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. City Manager Tanks, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Mr. Tanks. We will move on to our next agenda item.
The acoustics in here are horrible. Okay.
So I'll try to speak up. I can sound off. Okay, all right. So we're going to move on to item five, which is approval of the agenda. Everyone should have a copy of the agenda. Council, you all have had an opportunity to review the agenda before the meeting, and if there aren't any proposed changes or additions, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
So the motion has been made and seconded by Councilwoman Alk. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the motion carries. All right. So we'll now move on to item 6A on the agenda. It's a public hearing for zoning OZI 2025-007, where the applicant is requesting to amend the zoning conditions that were originally approved under case Z-50 of 2022 in Cobb County. The request includes approval for the site plan, architectural design, and permission to operate a convenience store with fuel cells on one of the property's out parcels. The location of the zoning case is in District 6. It's an undeveloped lot which sits on approximately 1.846 acres situated in front of the BJ's site, which now serves as Cobb County Police Training Center on East-West Connector. And at this time, Community Development, oh, he's already up there, Director Hughes. Can you provide us a little bit more context regarding this application?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and good evening, Council. Before we take up item A, I did want to just quickly mention item B under public hearings. REZ 2025-04 at 6851 Queen Mill Road. That item has been deferred by the Planning Commission, and that was done at their October 9th meeting. And it's been deferred until the November 6th meeting, so that will not be heard tonight. So anybody that's in the audience for that, that particular item will not be heard tonight. With that, I will introduce Chris Wheeler, who will come up and provide the details for OZI 2025-007. Thank you.
Good evening.
If you are presenting, just please speak clearly into the microphone at a moderate cadence, so everybody can hear you, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. This item before you this evening is OZI-2025-007. Mayor Protem Jeffco actually did a great job of summarizing exactly what this is about. The applicant that is here this evening is East-West Fuel LLC, representing by Sam's, Larkin, and Huff. Again, the applicant is seeking to amend the zoning stipulations related to a zoning case, Z-50 in 2002 by Cobb County, to approve a site plan, architectural site designs, and approval of the convenience stores with fuel cells. If we can go to the next slide in the PowerPoint. Again, this is just a general information related to this application. If we go to the next... This is an aerial photo of the subject property. The star indicates the location of the property. As the property has frontage along East-West Connector, the property is undeveloped. It is sitting in front of the old BJ's site, which now is the Cobb County Public Safety Training Center. If we go to the next slide, this is just, again, a photo picture of, if you're actually out on the site, of what the site looks like at this point in time. So if you're looking at it from just standing, I forgot what direction that is, but again, closest to the site is where it's just currently undeveloped. If we go to the next slide, please. This is the proposed site plan that the applicant is seeking for approval this evening. The site plan shows, again, convenience stores, a total of 4,500 square feet, with a gas canopy of 600, 832 square feet. If we go to the next page, on the next slide, these are architectural renderings of the proposed gas station. As you see, it has a brick facade on the side, and then with the stucco on the rear as well. If we go to the next slide, these are the stipulations that the planning staff is recommending approval of this application, because the staff has reviewed and believed that the request is consistent with the surrounding uses and the actual use itself is consistent with the zoning classification. So these are the stipulations that the planning staff is recommending for approval this evening. And the applicant is here for his presentation.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Parks Hough of the law firm of Sam's, Larkin, and Huff, and it's a pleasure to be before you tonight. First time to be before you, so thank you for having us, and I appreciate...
Mr. Huff.
Oh.
I think Mayor Protem needs to open the public hearing, and then we'll be timing your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to go over any housekeeping rules, Madam Clerk, before we get started?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. The applicant and anybody in favor of the application has a total of 10 minutes. We'll be keeping time of the presentation and the comments. And then those who oppose it will have 10 minutes. And if there are any minutes left, you can have a rebuttal, but just wanted to remind you of that. And then once she closes the public hearing, the council can ask their questions to the applicant further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open the floor for a public hearing for the zoning case, and I'd like to now invite the applicant.
And I thought I was being called out for probably not speaking into the microphone and being clear enough, so I probably deserve that, too. So I'll try to be clear and better in the microphone. This is a property that was owned 23 years ago, ironically, by my law partner 23 years ago. It was initially developed as a BJ's shopping center, closed many years ago. Obviously, this parcel has remained undeveloped, unutilized for 23 years. And the, what was the BJ's shopping center, which was supposed to kind of have a more of a neighborhood and retail feel, that's not there. And it's a police training facility. My client proposes a convenience store with fuel cells on it. It is very rare for me to be able to stand up and say, "You actually need gas stations on this corridor on this side of the road." If you start on Barrett Parkway at Dallas Highway, and you drive Barrett Parkway, you cross Powder Springs Road, you keep going, there is absolutely no gas on the right-hand side. The closest thing you have is the racetrack at Powder Springs, but it's not a right-in, right-out. You have to get on Powder Springs and come around. So there is actually a real need on this traffic corridor to have good, safe fueling. And it's a right-in, right-out, good for traffic congestion, to not have conflicting turning movements. And when you have a police training facility behind you, it does two things. One is, I think it, you know, sends a message of safety and security having police training facility. But also, that police training facility has a lot of activity, a lot of people coming in and out for training. And again, having a convenience store for fueling your cars, but also fueling your body with coffee and breakfast items, things like that, it makes sense in that location. So we appreciate the staff recommendation for approval. We think this is an appropriate location, and actually a needed location for additional, or actually the only fueling option. If you keep going, I didn't keep, but if you keep going, there is no other fueling on that right-hand side as you keep going south along East-West Connector. So there's a need for it. The property's been unutilized for 23 years, and this would put a use that's needed in the community. And if we could just figure out how to get to the, behind what was the BJ's is the tankyard. So if we could figure out how to get the tanks, the gas piped directly to this station, it should be the cheapest gas, but in all seriousness, the gas fueling would be coming from right there. So it's a great location, doesn't conflict with any other uses, and I appreciate your staff's professional review and recommendation for approval. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And for the record, can you please state your name for me?
My name is Parks Hough of the law firm of Sam's, Larkin, and Huff.
Thank you. At this time, if there is anyone who wishes to speak in support of the zoning case, please come forward. A final call for anyone who would like to speak in support. Seeing no one is wishing to speak in support, we'll now move to hear from those who oppose. If there is anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the zoning case, please come forward now. Final call, if you'd like to speak in opposition. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Council, are there any additional questions or comments regarding this particular item?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What are, what are your hours of operation for that location?
The hours would be typically from like 6:00 a.m. to 10, oh, to midnight. But it may not be consistent. Seven days a week, there may be shorter hours at times that there's not business. But it's going to be traditional hours.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was going to be 24 hours.
Yeah, it's my understanding it's not.
And do you already know which gas station?
I don't know how it's going to be branded, but my client develops these, and this will be a, not just a gas station, it will also have significant food items inside. I should have mentioned, been clear about that, too, so.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve OZI 2025-007. Yeah, ready. I would like to entertain a motion to approve OZI 2025-007. Applicant requests to amend Cobb County zoning stipulation, Z-50 of 2022, for site plan approval, architectural design approval, and approval of a convenience store with fuel cells as a use for out parcel.
So moved.
I'll second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor, is there any other discussion?
This is with the stipulations, correct?
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved.
Thank you.
So we've already mentioned by Director Hughes that item 6B is deferred until our November 12th, 2025, public hearing, so then that moves us to the next order of business, which is item 7A, presentation of the wellness grant check from Georgia Municipal Association. So the Georgia Municipal Association, or GMA, has awarded the city of Mableton staff a wellness grant as part of their health wellness program. The grant provides funding to cities, authorities, and regional commissions that have been approved for the program. And we are proud recipients to be among, receiving this award. The purpose of the grant is to essentially support employee health and wellness initiatives. I know in the private sector, we've, if you've worked for a private employer and want a Fitbit or an Apple Watch, you know, counting the steps and that sort of thing, it helps with lowering healthcare costs. And some of the examples of those programs are fitness and exercise programs, nutrition and healthy eating initiatives, mental health, proper health screenings, those sorts of things. So we're grateful to GMA for this opportunity, and we look forward to using these funds to create meaningful wellness programs that promote a healthy, engaged, and productive workforce. So at this time, our Director Pope, our HR Director, to come forward and provide additional information regarding the award.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Protem Jeffco. We'd like to ask both yourself and City Manager Tanks to come up here and take a photo with us. But I wanted to let the residents as well as our council know, and thank you, council, for your support always, that we actually have a wonderful member of our staff, Ms. Rochelle Blaylock, who is not only invested, but passionate about the health and welfare of our city employees. And she was the one who put the effort in to obtain the grant from GMA to go towards the betterment of the health and wellness of our staff, and so we appreciate it. So if we could just give Ms. Rochelle Blaylock a round of applause. Would you like to say anything, Ms. Ma'am?
Yes, you. Yes, you. Yes. It is very much a passion of mine to make sure that our employees are taken care of. It's very common that you see in companies that they are not. We preach a lot about health, we preach a lot about wellness, and telling people what to do, but do we ever offer those opportunities to our employees? So this is where my niche is, and I plan to bring way more into our community and our employees.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, City Manager Tanks, if you'd join us up here.
Absolutely love this. It's preventative, so I do want to take the opportunity to thank Georgia Municipal Association again for awarding the city of Mableton the wellness grant check, and our HR staff, including Rochelle, for applying for the grant on behalf of the mayor, city council, and our entire staff. We truly appreciate GMA's continued support and partnership, and their commitment to supporting the health, safety, and well-being of municipal employees across Georgia. And this grant helps us to continue to invest in programs and initiatives that promote a healthier workforce. So thank you so much. Our next order of business is item 7B. It is report on city limit signage. And this time, I'd like to ask SWB Director Groth, who's made a way, to provide us with an update.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Protem, city council, staff, and the community. I'll be brief and brilliant and gone, as our city manager says. This is just a brief update on our city limit signage that you may have seen installed throughout the city. This was in partnership with Cobb DOT. They've installed 30 signs on various types of roads, arterials, major and minor roads, and state routes. Right now, they are the green and white, regulatory, informative, and cost-effective. These are the detailed locations, the road by category. These are color-coded, so on the next slide, after, if you take a picture of it, or you can shoot me an email, I can send you this list, you'll see a map, a very broad map of where they all are, color-coded by those types of roads. The red dots are state routes that you all are familiar with. The red dots are state routes that you all are familiar with. The bluish-purple are the major collector roads, and the pink are the arterial roads that connect other communities. Now, this is a phased approach, so our communications department and other city departments may consider a future placemaking and branding initiative, and that's where you'll get custom signage and more unique coloring. But right now, this is a first, but important step. And that's an example of one of our signs. And that's all I have.
Thank you. How many have been placed so far?
Thirty.
Three?
Thirty.
Thirty?
All of them, yep. They should have all been done, yeah. They should have all been erected by last Friday.
Wow, that's awesome.
This is provided in our agenda packer. Can we go back to that slide so I can snap a little picture for myself?
Absolutely, yep.
Back to the list. The 30. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I think this is wonderful. It's great to see, this may be considered a small win, but it's a very meaningful one. These signs are just, more than just a visual update, they represent an amazing milestone and important one, and a first step in establishing our city's identity and presence. And so I'm just really excited to see that we have clearly defined boundaries now and letting everyone know that, hey, you're officially entering into the City of Mableton. And so it instills a sense of pride, making our city more visible, more recognizable. And so I just want to thank you, Director Groth, for all that you've been doing to make this happen. So thank you so much. At this time, we don't have any appointments, so we're going to move on to Item 9, which is public comments. Madam Clerk, do you want to go over the housekeeping rules?
Thank you all for being here. We are sorry for the way this room is, but we were put in this room due to a conflict in the ballroom. I know it's hard to hear, but please, when you speak, please slow down and speak loud so we can hear you. First of all, remember there's a two-minute time limit. Also, please follow decorum rules, which are located on the back of the public comment card. We ask that you do not shout, or point, or gesture, or move in a distracting or disruptive manner. We ask that you do not clout during the public hearing or comment portion of the agenda. Please, no defamation, intimidation, personal affronts, threats, or violence, or profanity. Behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting is not allowed. Any handouts that are circulated to the council should be approved and given to the city clerk prior to giving them to the council. And we'd appreciate if you followed these rules. And there are, we have a good many tonight. We have, I believe, we have eight. So I'll call the name and who's next, so you can be prepared to come up next. The first person is Richard Lozier, and following Richard is Monica Delancey. And I'm calling the names out in the order that the cards were given to me.
Hello, city council. Appreciate you allowing me to speak. My name is Ricardo Lozier. I'm the president of the Vinings Plantation Association. Our subdivision is located on, right across from the Vinings Park, soccer park. Anyway, I apologize, I'm a little nervous. My main focus today for coming here is to find out who is responsible for our retention ponds in our subdivision. We have two. We had contacted Cobb County. They sent us letters saying that they were responsible. Now they're telling us after two years that they're not responsible because now we're part of the City of Mableton. So I don't know, maybe somebody could get back with me and let me know so we know what to do, because the retention ponds are overgrowing, and they're working where they're supposed to, but there are eyesore and animals. We have raccoons, we got foxes living back there, so on and so forth. We can't remove them, so we have a little dilemma. So if anyone could help me out with that, really appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. I also want to stress, too, that if there were any flyers or anything that was passed out, please make sure that our city clerk has had an opportunity to take a look at them, because she is the one that is going to give, grant the necessary approval for those documents.
Okay, following Monica is Breann Perkins.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Monica Delancey. I reside in the Riverside Mableton community. I've been residing in the community for 18 years. When I got off of I-20, I pulled onto Sisflas Drive, and I don't know why, but God knew why. And after serving here and being here for 18 years, I have been recognized by many organizations, one being the NDLCP for the Dr. Mother King Honorary Award, also recognized by Georgia PTA Parent Leadership Award, also recognized by South Cobb Business Association Citizen Award, just to name a few, but like I said, I've been for 21 years. But also, I just want to recognize that, and also say that me being here, I was able to raise two wonderful children, graduates from Pepperbrook High School, Breanna and Ernest. Also, my daughter is a fourth-generation college graduate. That's what Monica Delancey has done as a full-figure woman living in the area. So when I was able to look at a post, a post that was posted by a city city councilman that stated that I needed to look in the mirror, that I needed to look in the mirror, but what I saw in the mirror is a person that handles business with proven results all day, every day. And I just kind of said, well, if this person is telling me that I am not in no shape or form to represent or be elected, then what does she think about other constituents that live in District 2, Riverside Mableton community? So every day, all day, Monica would thrive. Monica would thrive with a pig outfit on, with lipstick if I need to wear. Monica would thrive with a mu-mu on, but do not forget that I'm going to have proven results every time, every day. So in 2023, when I was a candidate for city councilman, I was thriving in with no money, and someone had to use a lot of money to beat me, but let it be known that we're going to thrive all day. Monica Delancey, I have the paperwork here. I did not know how to get it pre-approved, but if you'd like to see some of the work that we're doing in the area, I have it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Delancey.
Following Breann Perkins is Denny Wilson.
Greetings, Mayor Protem and city council. My name is Breon Perkins. I'm a resident of Mableton, Pepperbrook graduate, and I would like to speak today about civility. On September 24th, the City of Mableton passed a civility resolution. And this resolution emphasized the importance of listening to all voices and treating ones and another with dignity, and the city set an example for how they want to perceive further through their communication. But now we have a sitting councilwoman who has stated, referred to a constituent as a pig. This statement directly undermined the very civility this city just voted to uphold through the new civility measure. And it doesn't stop just there. We also have seen comments calling longstanding organizations, ones that have served this community long before Mableton became a city, disgraceful, simply because board members have relationships with other community leaders. That kind of language divides us when our focus should be building up these very groups that help make this community what it is today. These words don't just stay online, they ripple through our community. They send a message about how we treat one another and about whether everyone truly feels seen and respected by their local government. As constituents, we come in all shapes, sizes, and backgrounds, and every person in Mableton deserves to be treated with dignity and respect by their elected officials. I say this with the utmost respect. Leadership isn't about perfection, but it's about example. And the title mayor or a council member comes with a responsibility to thrive above the noise, to speak with integrity even when it's hard, and to treat our residents past, present, and future with dignity. Thank you.
Following Denny Wilson is Dante Philpott.
Good evening. I was kind of taken aback last week when I was told that we, the citizens in the City of Mableton, was paying more for our water bill than any municipality in Cobb County. And when it was told to me, I said, wait, will you repeat that? And I was wondering why many of the constituents or community people were complaining about their water bills. As a matter of fact, I had an instance about three times with mine, and the county lowered it three times. We don't have the electronic meters, so they rely on a company to come to your home. They pull up the little thing off of your water meter, and supposedly, they would read it. Well, I have five cameras on the front of my house, five cameras on the back. I never saw anyone from Cobb County. I went back 60 days and never saw my meter read, but I got a bill for $79. So I called Cobb County, I complained because I knew I hadn't used that much water, and each time, they dropped the bill to $19.03. Now, why are we being punished? Because Mableton has become a city, why are we being punished with these high-water bills? I mean, we get water from the same place that every other city in this county gets their water from, and nobody could give me the answer as to why are we being charged more. Nobody could. I mean, I've talked to, from the customer service guy, to the water director, to the guy that goes out and reads the meter, and nobody has the answer as to why Mableton is being charged more. So you guys, keep an eye on your water bill.
Following Dante Philpott, we have Peter Friedrich.
Council and Mayor Protem, thank you for the opportunity today. I want to be very clear in what I say. So as you know, we're in the midst of campaign season, and during these times, I somewhat expect to see interesting theatrics. However, what I've seen in Mableton is actually, is quite concerning. I've seen leaders engage in rude, juvenile, disrespectful, and sophomoric behavior. I would even say the actions being portrayed are somewhat degenerate in nature, distasteful even. The sad part is, your schemes are, they're so translucent that I was actually able to predict your actions. You've chosen to engage in underhanded political gamesmanship and prop yourself up on lies, all while trying to tear down the innocent as collateral damage in your quest for power. The sad part is, the lies that have been spoken have been easily refuted, but you choose to continue to parrot the lies in spite of the truth. But I'm here to tell you that the truth matters. See, leaders don't try to win in the court of public opinion by running to public platforms. Leaders don't tuck tail and run and create false narratives to mask their fears and insecurities. Leaders participate in meaningful dialogue, and they fight for their community. But through your actions, you've created an air of toxicity and division around this moment in our, around this moment in our city's history, when you could have been, and you should have been, trying to foster and promote inclusion, solidarity, and community. You owe that to your constituents. And I could double down on that word, but I'll spare you this time. Now, I believe in accountability, and this is tantamount to leadership. I believe our elected officials should be held to the highest standards and should be held accountable for their actions. And you have the opportunity to right your wrongs. In this moment, you have a choice, and I believe that the apology should be as loud as the transgression, but please know that I'm going to be watching, and you're on the clock.
Following Mr. Friedrich is Sam Colbreath.
Mableton became a city because you wanted clarity, clear lines of authority, and clear answers about who makes decisions for your community. Georgia State Senate Bill 375 does the opposite. It mandates enforcement of something it refuses to define and forces you to enforce it. This bill will require every Georgia agency to consider the definition of Hindu phobia when enforcing discrimination laws. That includes Mableton's HR department, your code enforcement, any city function touching employment or services. It defines Hindu phobia as antagonistic attitudes towards Hinduism, but it never says what Hinduism means, never says who counts as Hindu, and that's not a mistake, that's the mechanism as built in intentionally by its proponents. New Jersey is considering an actual anti-discrimination bill protecting Muslim Americans. It mentions Muslim persons 13 times, describes specific harmful conduct, pulling off the jobs, vandalizing mosques, workplace discrimination, real actions, real people, and it explicitly protects political speech. You can criticize Saudi Arabia the same way that you would criticize any other country. Georgia's bill does none of this. SB 375 never mentions Hindu people, just Hinduism, undefined. So when someone files a complaint with Mableton, your staff must decide. Does Hinduism include caste hierarchy? Does criticizing Modi's government count as religious antagonism? The bill provides no answer. Without definition, you cannot dismiss complaints. You must investigate. Your legal fees mount, the damage is done whether you win or lose. A city employee posts on Facebook, "I'm concerned about religious minorities in Kashmir." Someone files a complaint with Mableton claiming destructive attitudes towards Hinduism. State law now mandates you investigate. Your HR must adjudicate theology, decide what Hinduism includes. The employee learns, don't discuss Indian politics, not worth the risk. Mableton fought for clear governance. SB 375 weaponizes vagueness and forces you to enforce it. Please reject this resolution that the state will pass against you. And I have a handout for every member of the council on this issue.
Following Sam Colbreath is Trey Hutchins.
Good evening, city council and residents. My name is Sam Colbreath. I'm currently the chairman of the Altale Community Task Force. In a nutshell, what does the Altale Community Task Force do for the past 20 years is identifying and leveraging resources for the community, primarily centered around Cobb County Commission, District 4. And one of the ways that we do that is we host candidate forums. Every year, we've probably been doing it for probably about the past five years, and we did have one this past Monday. So I do invite everyone to, that wasn't able to attend, thanks to everybody that was able to attend, to review the recording, and just kind of a shameless plug, to make sure everyone gets out and vote during either the early period or on November 4th, as well as, and then it doesn't stop with just the voting process, right? The civic engagement keeps going. So we do that through our monthly meetings that we have on the first Monday of every month at the South Cobb Recreation Center. We do have a hybrid option available through Zoom, should you not be able to attend. And once again, that's, our next one is going to be on Monday, November 3rd, and it'll be taking place at the South Cobb Recreation Center in person, as well as online via Zoom. And if you have any questions, please feel free to go to our Facebook page. That's where the live stream from the candidate forum was, oh, and I will be remiss. That's where the live stream from the candidate forum was, oh, and I will be remiss without mentioning our great partners in the Cobb Collaborative and the Mableton Improvement Coalition for helping to put that on. And once again, you can check us out. You can send an email if you have any questions to ostellcommunitetaskforce@gmail.com, as well as go to our Facebook page to check out that live link.
The last speaker is Leroy Trey Hutchins.
Thank you, Leroy Trey Hutchins. I have the proud privilege of serving as the Cobb County School District Board of Education member representing Mableton, Allstell, and Powder Springs. On last Friday, the Battle of the Nest took place at Clay Stadium at South Cobb High School. The Pebblebrook High School Falcons will retain victory over the Nest for another year. This coming Friday and Saturday, the Cobb County Center for Excellence in the Performing Arts at Pebblebrook High School will present its annual Halloween production entitled "The Inviting." Tickets are available at Tix, and that's T-I-X dot com. It is probably one of the best performances of the year. I also want to just highlight something that one of our graduates, Breon Taylor, Breon Perkins spoke on today, in regards to Mableton being formally recognized as a city of civility by the Georgia Municipal Association. Some of the core principles within that is respectful communication, constructive disagreement, professional conduct, zero tolerance for incivility. I just want to encourage each and every one of us to continue to do the best that we can to serve everyone here in the city of Mableton with just civility and decency. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, everyone that spoke. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I would like to say to everyone, as a governing body, we can't respond directly to your public comments during this portion of the meeting, but please know that we hear you, we value your input, and we take your concerns seriously. And your voices are an important part of this process, and your feedback helps guide the work that we do on behalf of the community. So we thank you for your public comments. So this brings us to agenda item ten, Consent Agenda. Items A, B, and C relate to the new storm water maintenance agreement, which is just a standard procedure we'll now see with all the land disturbance permits through our planning and zoning department. And then, items D and E are approval of October 6 work session, and E is approval of October 8 regular meeting minutes. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
I second.
Okay, the motion has been made. And second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. All right, this, we don't have any unfinished business tonight, so this moves us to new business, which is item twelve. And twelve A is for the consideration and approval of our city's IT policies, which will be incorporated into our employee handbook and applied to all staff, including our new hires. These policies could include something in the effect of, like, acceptable use policies, remote work policies, mobile device policies. I know that our Director Franz also mentioned our artificial intelligence policy. These are essential because they help us establish clear expectations for how employees use our city's technology and data responsibly, and they help protect the city's digital infrastructure. They're going to safeguard against sensitive information and ensure compliance with state and federal regulations. So it's important that we adopt these IT policies. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the IT policies.
Make a motion to approve the IT policies?
Do you have a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. All right, the ayes have it, the motion is approved. This moves us to item twelve B, Consideration and Approval of Resolution Adopting the City of Mableton Employee Handbook and Policies. The draft handbook has been included in our agenda packet, and our Director Jean Poe presented this during our October 6th work session, and hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it. It's an important step in the right direction in us building just a strong foundation for our organization. It helps, as I mentioned before, establish those clear policies and expectations for employees. And at this time, do you have anything else to add regarding the employee handbook?
Please go to the podium.
I apologize, council. I was so comfortable sitting. Please excuse me. Just let me make mention that one change is that the PTO rollover amount, instead of three-twenty, is four-eighty. We are thinking futuristically for employees, and just wanted to make that notable change.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Could you repeat what the, what went from four-twenty instead of eighty?
It's the PTO maximum amount of accrual rollover hours. Instead of three-twenty, it's four-eighty.
Thank you, Director Poe. Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the City of Mableton's Employee Handbook.
I make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the City of Mableton Employee Handbook and Policies.
Hey, do you have a second?
I second.
Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. We have a handbook. So we will now move to item C, which is Consideration and Approval of a Resolution Adopting a City of Mableton Fleet Management Policy and for Other Lawful Purposes. During our October 6 work session, Director Ellis presented us with a proposed fleet management policy. Our current fleet includes six electric vehicles, five electric trucks, used across departments, community development, code enforcement, SWB. And the policy outlines Mableton's commitment to a sustainable, efficient, and accountable fleet. It focuses on six different areas: reducing emissions through low- and zero-emission vehicles, optimizing efficiency with route planning and maintenance programs, prioritizing sustainability and cost-effective procurement, ensuring accountability and compliance with environmental standards, leveraging innovation and technology for continuous improvement, as well as promoting community health and climate resilience. So it applies to anyone who is using a city vehicle, motorized or unmotorized. So we, the city is also committed to ensuring that we create an energy-efficient fleet, and it reaffirms our dedication to environmental stewardship, fiscal responsibility, and a modern fleet that meets operational needs while supporting our long-term sustainability goals. Okay? So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the City of Mableton's Resolution Adopting a City of Mableton Fleet Management Policy and for Other Lawful Purposes.
I make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the City of Mableton's Fleet Management Policy.
I second. The motion has been made. And second, I presume there isn't any discussion, so at this time, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you second it.
I did.
Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you.
The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. All right. This brings us to item twelve D, Consideration and Approval of Recommendation for a New Website Provider. This is, for me, long overdue. We've been discussing transitioning our city's website hosting from GoDaddy for quite some time. We've been waiting to add additional staff and support, and now that we have an IT director and a communications director, we can move forward with optimizing and modernizing our website. So this is a major step forward. It's paramount for our rebranding and building our professional presence online, and it's often the first impression that our residents see, our businesses, and visitors for our city. So it needs to be organized and accessible, so I'm really excited about this. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Director Woods and Director Francois to share more about the implementation plan and benefits of partnering with Civic Plus.
So I'm a short guy, so I kind of have to scoot over here. Can you hear me? Perfectly. Thank you for indulging me for a few moments this evening to talk about our website. If you aren't familiar with it, we use, currently use GoDaddy Arrow. And while it was built for small businesses and individuals with small businesses, it helped us get our city off the ground in terms of communicating to our residents. But I believe that we have reached a point to where we've expanded. We have new departments, new staff, we have a special service task district with Six Flags, and so we're at the point where we need something that is stable, scalable, easy to use for all employees, and a content management software that was specifically built for our local government. I just want to take a look back and just talk a little bit about how we got here. So the city tasked us to create a committee. Earlier this year, that committee was created. I'm not sure why it's jacked up over there, but just indulge me a little bit. The committee was created, and RFQ was put out. The committee interviewed several content management software vendors. They proposed Civic Plus as the recommended vendor. And at the time, the decision was made to wait for the Director of Communications and IT. And so we are here today, and we just want to share that we support the original recommendation that the committee put forth earlier this year. And we'll just run through a few slides and share why. One of the things that is super important is just talking about where it falls short. And for us, it doesn't, it wasn't built for government, one. It doesn't have ADA compliance tools built in to help us be inclusive with our content. It's not structured for us to have news events that update our residents in real time in terms of what's happening in the city. There's no Intranet for staff. There's also no internal document repository. Everything bottlenecks through the Department of Communications, so if anyone wants to make a change on their webpage, they have to wait for someone in our department to be free to go in and make that change. And lastly, anything that happens in GoDaddy has to be built completely from scratch, in-house, from staff. And I'll just run through a couple of those really fast. This one is the most important. The state of Georgia requires that by April 2026, all municipalities are meeting the standard of the Website Content Accessibility Guide at a level of 2.1 AA standards, which basically means that it ensures that folks who have vision, hearing, motor, and cognitive impairments are able to use our website just like anyone else. And so we believe that GoDaddy, I'm sorry, we believe that Civic Plus would be a great move for us because they have built-in ADA compliance tools that will not allow us to post until we meet those standards, which is an extreme help that could help us prevent fines or even lawsuits, which would be extremely important to us. In terms of resident engagement, that one is extremely important. What we currently use now in terms of our civic, our city clerk's office, we have Civic Clerk, we have MuniCode, and I want to say we also use Laserfish, and all three of those integrate with Civic Plus, which is extremely important. If you go to our website right now, there is no search tool, so because it isn't integrated, you can't go on our website and search with keywords to find what's happening in our agenda packets or what's happening in our individual departments. And once again, to touch on a point, it also allows us to be able to connect with our residents by giving them real-time push alerts and sharing what's happening with our news and event features. Scalability is extremely important. Civic Plus can grow with us. We can add payments, newsletters, we can add a multilingual chatbot, and we can also add in various other capabilities that are natively built in to Civic Plus that we believe will serve us well as a growing city. Internal efficiency, it will allow us to have an Intranet, which will allow that to serve as an internal portal for communications internally amongst employees, think forms, documents, or even just fun things like birthday updates. It allows us to communicate with each other internally. Transparency is extremely important in terms of being able to navigate the website. Once again, Civic Plus is integrated with software that we already use, and so that is extremely important to us. As we continue on looking around the state of Georgia, we're in good company. Places like Savannah, South Fulton, and Milton already use this website management software to communicate to their residents as well. Once again, just a quick recap for us. It's important for us that we switch off of GoDaddy and move to something that is specifically made for government, one, for ADA compliance, transparency, workflow capabilities. The communications department can manage the web, website at large, while each department can have control over their own webpage to update content. And that is extremely important when we talk about workflow. So there are several benefits to moving on to a new content management software system. And I will pass it over to Franz, and then lastly, I'll come back to talk about price, and we'll be done.
As far as for IT part, like for the IT, kind of like no more, like no more than I'm looking for myself, for the city is more security, which is a huge big thing for the city right now. We're making sure like all the resident information is secure, same as us as well for all the information we got in form. So this is why, the reason like, you know, I signed up with my colleague right now, Gregory, to make sure to moving forward with Civic Plus. Pretty much, like, when it comes to the tech, I'm leaving, that's why it would be real quick. I don't want to barge you guys too much when it comes to the technology part. So, yeah, Civic Plus is going to be the best thing for us moving forward right now, because GoDaddy, as Gregory mentioned right now, there's a lot of functionality I cannot do for, implement for the city right now. As far as like, you know, two-step verifications, and also making sure like, you know, when somebody logging, also register for the newsletter that you mentioned right now, I want to make sure like, you know, all this information is secure, is automatically saved in the city. So for you guys not feel like, oh, I'm not, I don't want to give the city my email address, it might be getting leaked. Not at all. That's our own priority right now. We want to make sure everybody's safe and make sure also, everybody feels secure to give the city all the information needed. That's it for the IT part.
In closing, maybe I need to go back just a little bit, but I can't see that there. It's okay, I have it memorized. In closing, to get started with Civic Plus, it would run us just under seventeen thousand dollars for the implementation process, and would cost us just under ten thousand dollars a year to maintain. We're looking at doing this in a three-phase part. The first phase, the first phase is to transition off of GoDaddy Arrow to Civic Plus for its workflow capabilities. Secondly, we're looking at doing a brand logo and seal process, which will be an inclusive community process. Once we define our logo and our seal and our values and all those things, we'll be able to do a third phase, which will then be able to go back into create a specialized design specifically for the city of Mableton in terms of customizing our website on the backend. And that is, those are the three phases that we're looking at doing in terms of our website. And I will leave it open to questions if you have any.
Can you share more about the timing of the phases, once we approve this?
Yeah, so, right now, we're looking at, if we can move forward today, we're looking at getting this completely swapped out within the first quarter of 2026. We're still working on the Phase Two. That requires more conversations with our finance director and city manager, but I will say, the RFP has already been written. It's made it through the procurement process, and it's also been reviewed by legal. So, once we're able to continue the conversations in terms of putting a Plan Four for that, we'll be able to come back with more details.
Okay. And should residents expect a downtime during the transition?
No. No.
I was curious as to who will be working with the design of the website. Like, I know we have a company, but in terms of internal staff, who's going to be directing that?
Right now, it's myself, it's France, and our lovely city clerk. And mind you, I would just like to reiterate, the first phase is just to have the functionality of the website. The third phase is more focused on the design after we go through a branding process.
So the first phase is basically moving what's on the website today to the new platform? Okay.
And is it 17K base costs based off of the requirements that you submitted? And are there add-ons that could increase that cost?
Yes.
Okay. And then when you talk about the commercialization timeline, I know I noticed in the packet that it said deployment could take up to six months.
Yes.
Is that what you're anticipating?
No.
Okay.
Up to six months are usually for cities that have been around for decades and they have a bottleneck of content. We haven't been around that long, and so we believe that we'll be able to do this expeditiously.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of recommendation for our new website provider, Civic Plus, for implementation, content management and development, hosting training, and other services.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. We have a new website provider. So excited about that. All right. So that moves us to item 12E, which is consideration and approval of a resolution updating the city of Mableton's special regulatory fee schedule to include alcohol server permit and special regulatory work permit identification card fees. So we've already adopted a fee schedule for special regulatory permits. This resolution simply revises the existing schedule to add a $10 fee for the alcohol server permit to cover the cost of printing identification cards. And this update ensures the fee accurately reflects the administrative costs associated with using permits and maintaining proper records. And at this time, we have the business license supervisor, Mayor Edmonds, who can provide further context.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and Council. Thank you for that summary. That is exactly what this resolution is proposed to do. We are introducing a $10 fee to process permit cards, and that will just cover the cost of administration and the issuance of those cards. Happy to answer any questions that you may have about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of a resolution updating the city of Mableton's special regulatory fee schedule to include alcohol server permit and special regulatory work permit identification card fees.
I make a motion too for the approval of a resolution updating the city of Mableton's special regulatory fee schedule to include alcohol server permit and special regulatory work permit identification card fees.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded by Councilwoman Al. We've already had discussions. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the motion stands. Okay. This moves us to our final item under New Business, which is item 12FF. This is a first reading of an ordinance to establish Chapter 15, which is the historic preservation of the city code of ordinances. And this ordinance is modified from a Cobb County ordinance, but it's been tailored specifically for the city of Mableton. Today is just the first reading, which is the beginning of the process. We'll have a second reading that will follow, which will establish the full framework and eventually implement our historic districts. At this time, we have Deputy Community Development Director Tina Garver, who's going to provide more details.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Protam, City Council, City Manager, members of the public. Just an introduction on this. Again, this is first reading of the historic preservation ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance is to establish a uniform procedure for use and providing for the protection, enhancement, perpetuation, and uses of places, districts, sites, buildings, structures, and works of art having special historical, cultural, and aesthetic interest or value in accordance with the provisions of this chapter. Want to just go through a few highlights. The entire ordinance is attached for your review. Again, this is first reading. This ordinance does establish the Historic Preservation Commission. Let me go to the next slide. This commission will consist of seven members, and each council member will appoint a member of this commission. This ordinance outlines the roles of this Historic Preservation Commission. Some of the highlights are preparing an inventory of properties that qualify for historic preservation, issuing certificates of appropriateness if there's somebody that is asking to do a change to the structure, conducting educational programs on historic properties, and also seeking out state and federal funds. There's a full list here for your review, and I'm just going to pick out some of the highlights. There are two different things that can be established through this ordinance. The first one is a district. And when we're looking at areas to identify districts, which this ordinance does not do, this ordinance lays out the framework for what we will do going in the future is when we'll establish districts or landmarks. Districts have to have a special character or special historic or aesthetic value or interest. They need to represent one or more periods of styles of architectural typical of one of those errors in history of the city, county, or state or region, and cause such area by reason of such factors to constitute a visible, perceptible section of the city. And so in a district, not every property will meet these criteria. You'll have properties that are historic in that district that are more than 50 years old. You'll have some that are less than 50 but provide a certain architectural character. And then you'll have intrusions, which are structures less than 50 years old, which do not contribute to the historical character of the district. In addition to districts, we'll have the opportunity to identify landmarks. Landmarks have similar criteria, and one of them would be to be an outstanding example of a structure representative of this error. It is one of the few remaining examples of past architectural style, or it is a place or structure associated with an event or person or historic or cultural significance to the city, county, or state, or the region. This ordinance outlines the process for us to establish these districts or landmarks in the future. This process would begin with either a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, or it could be an application from the private property owner or neighborhood association. There will be a public hearing held by the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission and the mayor and council. You can skip ahead. Again, this one. And then after the public hearing, there's a notification of all property owners in that proposed designation. There's notification ahead of that public hearing as well. After the property owners are notified, it gets added to our zoning map. Then we notify the Department of Natural Resources, where they will have 30 days to review that request. The city holds another public hearing, and then we notify the property owners of the designation, and then we notify the remaining other agencies. So again, there is a process. This ordinance doesn't establish those, but it outlines that framework for us to do so in the future. Next slide. One of the roles will be reviewing certificates of appropriateness. This is if there is a material change in the appearance of such historic structure, the commission will be able to review those applications. The criteria for approval or denial are also outlined in this code, and what they're having to say is whether or not it would have a substantial adverse effect on the aesthetic, historic, or architectural significance and value of the historic property or the historic district. These certificates of appropriateness are for any type of exterior modification. And then it has additional outlined procedures for somebody wanting to demolish or relocate a structure once it's established. That has specific criteria that they have to meet, and if they meet any of the criteria outlined, then the Historic Preservation Commission would deny that request for demolition. Again, this is first reading. The full ordinance is available for review, and what this one does is lays the framework so that we can establish Historic Preservation Commission and then establish either districts or landmarks in the future. And I'm available if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Well, the good news is that this is a first read. I have a quick question. When do we need to let you know who our nominee is for the commissions?
That will be the next step after we adopt the ordinance. So something to start thinking about.
Thank you. Okay, that was the last item under our new business. We don't have any other business to discuss, so this moves us to Agenda Item 14. City Manager, do you have any comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor Protam, I do. I want to thank all our directors for their policies they got forth tonight. Very excited, especially about the website. Publicly want to thank Ms. Emily Graff for her work on getting our boundary signs. If you drive around the city of Mableton, it is very exciting to see you pull up on the road and it says Mableton City Limits. There's certain areas I didn't even know. So excited. I want to say thank you to Emily for doing that. I want to publicly thank our city attorney. Rarely do people know some of the hard work she does. Quiet about it. But we recently closed on 22 acres of land off of the Silver Comet Trail, and Mableton now... And we also purchased an old hair salon in Mableton that we're going to make good use of for the city. And we've been able to do this thanks to our finance team, our finance director, without overburdening our finances. We're going to have a finance report coming up in November. We're looking very good. So I'm just proud of a lot of folks who do a lot of good work, especially again, Mableton capitalizing on its natural assets. And one of its natural assets is the Silver Comet Trail, and we can definitely say now that we have a highly potential destination for people to come to our city. So thanks to all the people on our team, again, that do a lot of good work.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, any comments? Okay. So that'll move us to District 1, Councilman Ron Davis.
Yes. Y'all notice I'm wearing pink today, and it is because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And it means a lot to me simply because I'm married to a two-time survivor of breast cancer. Actually, in the midst of my campaign, between campaigning and going to the doctor and actually all the other things I do, I mean, she was a trooper. And I'm sure there are some people here who has someone in their family or knows of someone who's been affected by this disease. So I want to invite you this Saturday to Grace City Church at 4293 Ostel Road. She is actually hosting a breast cancer awareness event. She does it every year. She's been doing it even when she was sick, but she's been doing it now for a number of years. You're going to have a lot of different experts, health professionals. There'll be a raffle too, so win something maybe. But really, I want to invite you to that because information is key. A lot of times, when you're informed about these things, you're able to address them more effectively. I'll put it like that. Now, the second thing I want to say, and then I'm going to shut up, is being a man of faith, I invite you, and I've said this before, to pray for our community, pray for our city, pray for our nation. One of the things that concerns me when it comes to public discourse is that we live in a time now where it's popular sometimes to be controversial. It's popular to be sometimes, I'll say, for lack of a better term, acidic. It's popular to be...to conflict or whatever, whatever you want to call it. But the thing is, we still live in the United States of America, the United States of America. And one of the problems I see is that, and I know social media is a big thing. I'm not that big on social media because some of the things I see on social media are a big turnoff to me. Instead of bringing us together as we should be, as a united nation, they pull us apart. So when you look at social media now, you may want to start looking at how do the things we see on social media unite us more so than divide us? How do those things make us stronger as a community, as a city, and as a nation? When we can do those things, when we see those things, when we operate in that spirit, we become better forward as a community, as a city, and as a nation. So I admonish everyone. Let's look at it for what it is. Because I disagree with you, I'm not your enemy. Because you disagree with me, I'm not your enemy. We're still one nation. So let's bear that in mind and keep each other lifted up because, you know, we only have, I'll put it in like this, at the end of your lives, will it have mattered that you ever lived? Will it have mattered? And how much did you contribute to the positive things that your life comprised of? So bear that in mind, and y'all have a good night, a good weekend, and we will see you the next time. And hopefully, we won't have a long executive session the next time you. But have a good night.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. So this moves us to District 2, Councilwoman Dami Oladapo.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I do not have any comments tonight. Just want to thank you all for coming and safe travels back home. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, Councilwoman Patricia Alk, District 4.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank our staff and particularly Rochelle for your work with the Health and Wellness Grant from GMA, because we love getting money from grants. And of course, Emily for your work with the signage for our city. This weekend, I got to participate in a really fun chase. It was the inaugural Pumpkin Chase 5K, and it was hosted by It Starts With Me Too, which is a nonprofit to enhance the quality of life in communities through education, nutrition, and physical fitness. It was very well organized. It was a lot of fun, and I've already signed up for next year. So I hope they...well, they're going to do it next year. So I hope, encourage you all to participate. You can run or walk. In addition, since we're talking about races, Silver Comet Races is hosting...let me get my notes, guys. I'm sorry. It's a special race because it's like their 25th silver award. Okay. They need volunteers this Saturday. They will be celebrating their 25th running of the Silver Comet Half Marathon and the 14th Full Marathon. This is October 25, 2025. Volunteers are needed for 6:00 AM. I know it's really early. Number pickup, or at 1:00 PM to close out the finish line. The start and finish is at Silver Comet Trail, Floyd Road Trailhead at 4342. If you have questions, email silvercometrace@gmail.com, and if you can give some time, that would be great. I also want to tell you about our Giving Garden is having a... I also want to tell you about our Giving Garden is having a garden club meeting also this Saturday from noon to 1:00 p.m., and they are located at 75 Cooper Lake Road. So if you have an interest in participating in some gardening, this is a great way to meet like-minded people who also have that same interest. And thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Alk. At this time, we have District 6, Councilwoman Deborah Herndon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening to everyone. Thank you for being here tonight, including our online people. It's a little light tonight, but online anyway, but we thank them for dialing in and participating. I also want to thank our staff. Mableton has really come a long way. I mean, from Director Groff to our new HR, Ms. Pope, and all of our staff have been doing an amazing job. Thank you for all that you do. I know during the season, I've heard a lot about nothing being done for Mableton. I hear that a lot, you know, it's the season where those type of things come out, like what has happened, what has gotten accomplished? And I liken what we've done to a building, you know? When buildings are going up and you're passing by the same spot for sometimes months on end, and it doesn't look like any progress is being made, you still see the dirt, and it looks like nothing has been accomplished. But as soon as the foundation has been set, then the real building can begin. And then the next thing you know, you're saying to yourself, wow, they sure put that up quickly, you know? And so that's where we are as Mableton. I know a lot of people are still looking for the tangible things that you can see that denotes progress, but at the same time, when the foundation isn't good, then anything that's built on top of it is not good, you know? So Mableton has accomplished a lot. There's a lot going on. And as a team, most of whom have not had any political background, we are regular people, but we've all gotten together and we've learned, and we have made very good decisions for the City of Mableton to where we currently have a surplus so far in terms of our revenue. And so I'm really grateful for that. And so when you hear the naysayers saying that nothing has been done, please remind them that as a small team, we got a lot accomplished for a city of 80,000 people with no transition team. So that's something to be proud of. And for those of us who have been on the council, we have worked hard in these two years to get things accomplished. So don't be fooled by what you hear and take a look at what's happening because Mableton is definitely on the move. So thank you all for coming and have a good evening.[1145.83][1145.83](APPLAUSE).
I love that, Mableton on the move. Yes, we are. So I'll promise I'll be quick, or maybe I'll take up some Councilman Ferguson and the mayor's time. I'll get some of their time tonight. So many of you may have remember, this was just a couple weeks ago, we issued a missing persons alert for Ms. Tangi Huddy-Davis. She was a 44-year-old woman who was last seen on October 9. She was recently found deceased, and her death has been confirmed as an act of domestic violence. On behalf of the mayor, council, and the entire City of Mableton, we extend our deepest condolences to Tangi's family, her friends, and her loved ones. If you know anyone who, you know, is in an unsafe situation, please know that help is available. You can contact the National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-SAFE. And let us make sure that we keep Tangi and her family in our thoughts and prayers, and let this be a reminder to look out for each other. She went missing on Floyd Road at the Lido. So very close in our proximity, and so we just need to, you know, look out for each other, support each other, and, you know, be aware and take action when we see things that are going awry. So her and her family are in my prayers. As our city manager tanks mentioned, we have land. I'm just so excited about this. You know, just two years ago, as Councilwoman Herndon mentioned, we had nothing. And since then, we've been able to amass 33 acres of land since I incorporated. I mean, that's a big deal. It demonstrates just how we are in terms of forward-thinking and planning for the future, and carefully just considering how we want to use the land to benefit, you know, our residents and grow our city strategically. And I just want to take a moment to congratulate this council for making responsible and thoughtful decisions and exercising financial prudence now that we have a financial director with advancing our long-term vision. I do want to acknowledge our city manager and our leadership from our mayor, as well as our city attorney, whose guidance and strategic oversight have been instrumental in helping us with these significant acquisitions. So very important. And it's more than just about acquiring the land, right? It represents so much more than that with proactive planning and community development and just building a strong foundation for us for the future so we can create parks and we can preserve areas of historical and cultural reference and significance. So I'm just grateful for this progress and excited about the opportunities and just looking forward to what's ahead, so. All right, and speaking of growth, I want to highlight two exciting ribbon cuttings that are getting ready to happen next week. Friday, October 25, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m., we have the grand opening of Summerland Dental and Sleep. I think that's off of East West Connector. And then Tuesday, October 28, in my district, from 3:30 to 4:00 p.m., is the grand opening of the Chick-fil-A. Speaking of building, they go back quickly, right? Yeah, it was really, really fast. It just seemed like we were just, right, the groundbreaking, exactly. So it happened really fast. So both of these are just significant milestones, and they represent new business, represent jobs and investments and confidence in Mableton's future. So just excited that these business owners decided to plant root here in the City of Mableton to serve our residents and to add a sense of community and pride here in our city. So happy about that. Okay, it's election season. I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse. We are 12 days away, and as we approach this season, I know it gets competitive, emotional, maybe even tense. It's normal and healthy in our democracy to have that. It's also important, as it's been said, to treat each other with respect. And also, what it means to be a leader is just having some decorum, you know, just being diplomatic when it's hard, especially when it's hard. So it doesn't mean that you don't stand firm in your beliefs, and diplomacy doesn't mean that you avoid, you know, tough conversations. It means you approach them with respect and with self-control and understanding that your words and actions, both in public and online, reflect not just you, but the city that you represent and the community that you represent. So if you are a leader in this community and you sit on this council, we set the tone. And we want our residents to engage respectfully, to trust the process, to feel proud of our city, and that it begins with us modeling that level of respect for each other. So we hold these offices as community leaders, and we need to respect the offices that we sit in and the people we serve. So in these final days, I know that tensions can run high, but let's remember no misinformation, no personal attacks, no disrespect, whether you're speaking to someone in person or online. It does not strengthen our city, it divides it. So social media is great, right? It can be a powerful tool for connection, but it can also be a weapon when it's used carelessly. So before we post, we should pause. I know that I'm, you know, when I get in my feelings and my emotions, I take a step back before I, you know, I might type it, but I'll hit the erase button, you know, before I post. So, you know, we want to build our community, okay? And we don't want to tear each other down. And make sure that we're talking about the issues and not just attacking one another. So let's rise above the noise, stay focused on the issues that matter, and continue to represent Mableton with integrity, professionalism, and respect.[1571.01][1571.01](APPLAUSE). Okay, calling all young leaders. Are you ready to make a difference in your community? So Cobb County Youth Commission is now accepting applications for the 2025-2026 program year. So if you know of any young adults, well, not adults, young students, in grades nine through 12, please encourage them to apply. The deadline is Wednesday, October 29. You have until 5:00 p.m., so make sure you share this information and also go on Cobb County website. They have the information there as well. So a lot of upcoming fall events and some nonprofit organizations within our community are doing some amazing things, great work. Hope Family Resource Center is having a Sneak-a-Ball fundraiser that's coming up. All of the information is here. It's going to be on November 15, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. You can scan the QR code. It'll direct you back to their website about additional information on how you can get involved. Ms. Turner is heavily involved in our community, doing great work, and I'm pretty sure she'll probably have additional events with the holidays coming up. So make sure that you get involved and volunteer with her organization. Family Life Restoration Center is also having several events that are happening as well. We have a trunk-or-treat. Volunteers needed to bless 2,000 families with dinner for Thanksgiving. Veterans Dinner, I know our next meeting is after Veterans Day, so Happy Veterans Day to all of the veterans that have served this country. We appreciate you. And then there will also be Toys for Tots as well. Please, you know, scan the QR code, go on their website. They desperately need volunteers. So if you could volunteer to go put Thanksgiving baskets together, please go and volunteer and support these nonprofits who are doing amazing work in our community. And then our next meeting, I forgot to mention, We Thrive on Riverside also is doing some great work as well. They'll be having some events, so that's another nonprofit that's doing some work in our community. And then our next meeting is November 10. We have a work session, and then November 12 is our city council meeting. If you're not able to attend, make sure you join us online. And then last, I want to mention that the ultimate, I love quotes, so I'll end with this quote, "The ultimate measure of a leader is not where they stand in moments of comfort and convenience, but where they stand at times of challenge and controversy." So that was Martin Luther King Jr. that said that quote. Okay? I don't have anything else at this time, so I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn. One second.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.[1790.41][1790.41](APPLAUSE).